Thank you, Ms. Woodruff, and good evening, everyone. My name is Kristen Apodaca, and I'm a senior at Hanks High School. It is my honor and my pleasure to call this meeting to order.
Good evening, and welcome to the Isleta Independent School District's meeting of the Board of Trustees. Whether you are here to address the board or to celebrate the accomplishments of those being honored here this evening, we appreciate that you have taken the time to join us. We invite you to share your comments with the board during the public comment portion of our meeting. The public comments sign-up cards show the rules for participating. Legally, the board may listen but may not enter into a discussion on the issue raised. We remind everyone that this is a board meeting, often attended by students, and ask that we all conduct ourselves in a manner that best represents the values and traditions of the Isleta Independent School District. Please turn off or silence all cell phones, tablets, and other electronic devices, and thank you for your attendance. This meeting of the Board of Trustees is called to order at 6:05 PM. We have a quorum with Charlie Bustillos, Richard Cudier, Cruz Ochoa, Mike Rosales, and myself, Connie Woodruff. Trustees Sotero Ometes and Katherine Lucero are unable to attend. On behalf of Vice President Ometes, I am honored to introduce Isleta High School JROTC. The colors tonight are being presented by the junior ROTC color guard from Isleta High School. Once an Indian?
Once an Indian.
Thank you. The color guard commander is cadet Sarah Munoz. The other color guard members are Ariel Galarza, Alex Rivera, Maria Ascareno, and the pledge leader is Ashley Herrera from Isleta High School. Will you please stand for the presentation of the colors, reciting of the Pledge of Allegiance, the Texas Pledge of Allegiance, in a moment of silence? Please remain standing until the cadets have departed. Dr. Delatorre, do you have recognitions and introductions for us?
President Woodruff, members of the board, esteemed guests, we have several this evening, an opportunity to celebrate and recognize the achievement of our student athletes. At this time, I'd like to introduce Ms. Patricia Ayala, our Chief Communications Officer. She will lead in the recognitions and introductions.
We have five recognitions for you this evening. At this time, we ask that you please come to the front of the dais for the presentations. Audience members, please remain seated until all recognitions are complete. Our first recognition honors Hanks High School senior Kristen Apodaca, a kind-hearted student leader whose commitment to service extends far beyond her campus to the youngest and most vulnerable children in our community. Kristen volunteers in the library at Pebble Hills Elementary School, helping with a variety of tasks that include reading to students, helping students with their homework, or finding and checking out books that students will enjoy. But what makes Kristen exceptional is that she has purposely learned the name of every student at Pebble Hills. In one semester, she has gotten to know the students on an individual basis and is able to pinpoint when they are struggling so she can give them help and attention when they need it the most. Kristen also volunteers at Abasal Children's Hospital and the Center Against Family Violence, where she dresses in costume as Elsa from the popular Disney movie Frozen, and she sings to the children with her twin sister Kayla. Teachers and administrators say that Kristen is all heart and never misses an opportunity to highlight the awesomeness of others. Her compassion, kindness, and devotion to community service makes her a standout among her peers, and tonight, we honor her outstanding commitment to service excellence. Ladies and gentlemen, please welcome this month's president's award winner, Hanks High School senior Kristen Apodaca. Kristen is accompanied by principal Enrique Herrera. Let's hear it one more time for Kristen. Our next recognition is in honor of four Eastwood High School students who won the gold at the Region 1-5A Regional Swimming Championships last month in Lubbock. They dominated the competition and captured championships in several categories, including the 100-yard breaststroke, 200-yard freestyle, and the 400-yard freestyle relay. Ladies and gentlemen, please help me congratulate our 5A Regional Gold Medalist from Eastwood High School, starting with Senior John Michael Hollister, Senior Eduardo Saint Lo, Sophomore Giancarlo Saint Lo, and Junior Evan Vicencio. The students are accompanied by Coach Manny Gardea and Principal David Boatwright. Let's hear it again for the troopers. Our next recognition Our next recognition is in honor of 12 outstanding musicians and singers from Eastwood, Hanks, and Parkland High Schools who were selected for this year's UIL All-State Band and Choir Ensembles. They proudly represented the district last month when they performed alongside the state's best musician at the Texas Music Educators Association Convention in San Antonio. Congratulations to our talented students on this wonderful accomplishment. Ladies and gentlemen, from Eastwood High School, help me congratulate tenor singers Nicolas Gallegos and Alberto Velazquez. They are accompanied by choir director Ms. Dominique Vélez and Principal David Boatwright. Next, from Hanks High School, please help me congratulate bass singer Jesus Cordova, soprano singer Jayah Edgerton, trumpet players Diego Enriquez and Jesús Escobar, flute player Bridget Hernandez, trombone players Sean Salazar and Demetrius Thornton. And lastly, we have alto saxophone player Sashel Valenzuela. The students are accompanied by assistant band directors Mr. Doug Brown, Mr. Calvin Edwards, Ms. Emily Petty, band director Mr. Horacio Gomez, choir director Mr. Orlando Guerrero, and principal Enrique Herrera. Let's hear it again for the knights. Next, from Parkland High School, let's hear it for bass singer Sebastian Calderon and B-flat clarinet player Peyton Bell. Students are accompanied by band director Ms. Rebecca Rodriguez, choir director Ms. Yoon Mi Garza, and principal Penelope Bangston. Let's hear it one more time for our TMEA musicians. Our next recognition is in honor of Mariachi Los Trovadores de Hanks High School. A Hua, which received a Division One rating of Superior at last month's UIL Mariachi Contest for Region 22. As a result, the group traveled to Edinburgh, Texas to compete against nearly 70 high school groups at the UIL State Mariachi Festival, where they earned an overall Division Two rating of excellent. Congratulations to our district's newest mariachi group on their achievement. Ladies and gentlemen, please help me congratulate the 22 student musicians and singers that make up Mariachi Los Trovadores, beginning with America Carrera, Sebastian Carrillo, Carlos Casares, Delia Chavez, Ixta Sainz Delgado, Victoria De Long, Jayah Edgerton, Diego Enriquez, Jesús Escobar, Julisa Falcon, Alfredo Marquez Galván, Marcos Gutierrez, Samuel Gutierrez, Brandon Jimenez, Andrew Cross, Siobhan Lida, Damon Mesa, Abraham Gutierrez Medrano, Pablo Gutierrez Medrano, Jonathan Melendez, and Nancy Pinales. The students are accompanied by their directors, Mr. Osvaldo Alta Mirano, Mr. Doug Brown, Mr. Juan Contreras, Ms. Carla Urias Cudier, Mr. Orlando Guerrero, and principal Enrique Herrera. Can we have Buen Hua before you leave? Congratulations to Los Trovadores. Our final recognition this evening is for a group of championship wrestlers from Del Valle, Eastwood, Hanks, and Parkland High Schools who won gold and silver medals at both the regional and state UIL meets this month. This includes the regional champions first. From Del Valle High School, please welcome Senior Javier Duchaine, accompanied by coach Carlos Armandares, and assistant principal Victor Lara. From Eastwood High School, let's hear it for Senior Daniel Salvad, who is accompanied by coach Troy Douglas and principal David Boatwright. From Hanks High School, please help us congratulate Senior Isabella Gonzalez and juniors Abigail Anaya and Victoria Núñez. Students are accompanied by coach Anthony Carter and principal Enrique Herrera. And from Parkland High School, please welcome junior Zoe Hankins, accompanied by coach Ricky Burns and principal Penelope Bangston. Let's hear it again for our regional champions. Next, we are recognizing our state wrestling champions. Please help me welcome the five students who won individual gold or silver medals last month at the 5A State Wrestling Meet in Cypress. From Eastwood High School From Eastwood High School, let's hear it for Daniel Salvad. Daniel is accompanied by coach Troy Douglas and principal David Boatwright. Next, from the Lady Knights team, please help me congratulate Isabella Gonzalez and Victoria Núñez. From the Hanks Boys Wrestling Team, please welcome Abraham Inohosa. The students are accompanied by coach Anthony Carter and principal Enrique Herrera. Our final state medalist is Zoe Hankins from Parkland High School. Zoe is accompanied by coach Ricky Burns and principal Penelope Bangston. Let's hear it one more time for our gold and silver medalists. Last but not least, we have the extremely talented and amazing Lady Knights Wrestling Team from Hanks High School, which surpassed all expectations this year and proudly brought home their sixth consecutive state championship title. As usual, the Lady Knights completely dominated their statewide competitors, scoring a total of 96.5 points and leaving all other high school wrestling teams in the dust. Ladies and gentlemen, let's give a huge round of applause to our six-time the dust. Ladies and gentlemen, let's give a huge round of applause to our six-time 5A Stage Girls Wrestling Champions, the phenomenal and incomparable Lady Knights. Let's hear it for sophomore Kylie Robledo, sophomore Aliya Villarreal, junior Abigail Anaya, junior Annette Enciso, junior America Gutiérrez, junior Victoria Inoho, junior Victoria Núñez, senior Cynthia Gómez, and our last one, senior Isabella González. The Lady Knights are accompanied by assistant coaches, Mr. Rolf Cedillo and Mr. Miguel Padilla, head coach, Mr. Anthony Carter, and principal Enrique Herrera. At this time, the Lady Knights would like to present state championship gold medals to each trustee and superintendent as a token of their thanks for their support. Thank you. This concludes our recognitions for this evening.
Secretary Rosales, do we have requests for citizens' input?
Madam Chair, we do not at this time.
The order of business shall be set out in this posted agenda unless changed by consensus of the board. Are there any items you would like to pull off the consent agenda for a separate vote? Thank you. The agenda will be considered the consensus of the board. We have a report this evening by Secretary Rosales.
Very briefly, I'd like to make comments on the fact that I attended the... Can you hear me now? Everybody can hear me. I just want to take a few minutes to share with you a few items that happened at the Mexican-American School Board Association meeting that was held a week ago in Austin. The Mexican-American School Board Association has very rapidly become quite an organization in the state of Texas. We hired an executive director a year ago and just in doing so and the enthusiasm of that organization, it just has grown and we're on our way to bigger and better things for the betterment of the children of the state of Texas. Some of the things that happened, there was an advocacy day of which I was part of and we distributed the information that some of our legislators that we could get to could be aware of some of the challenges that we're facing in public schools. Yours truly probably visited approximately easily about twenty representatives or senators' offices. This had never been done in such a concentrated effort since I've been on the board, which is going on two years. The other thing too that I'd like to make mention, I mentioned briefly before, we have now signed up close to ninety-one districts in the state of Texas. Mind you, there's a thousand, so we've got a ways to go, but everything we do is for the betterment, for the enhancement of our children in the great state of Texas. Some of the items that were discussed pretty much have to surround around, or shall I say, around the issues, the funding. We talked about special ed and a variety of different things that are very pertinent to us in our work that we do for the school board. And towards the end, well, not towards the end, on Saturday evening, we had the installation of new officers. Yours truly maintain the position of secretary, which I'm very happy to be part of, but we now have a new slate of officers and some great, great minds coming up through the ranks. And lastly, and not least, is we had one of the, a group that has performed for us before. The individual is Roger Velazquez and he's got quite a group and fortunately this year he was, that group was awarded the Latin Grammy Award, which was a real thrill. Great musicians. And that pretty much concludes my report.
Thank you. The order of the agenda has been approved. May I have an electronic motion and a second on the consent agenda items listed on this agenda as recommended by administration?
Madam Chair, I move to approve the five items on the consent agenda items listed on this agenda as recommended by the administration.
We have a second by Mr. Cudier and that is approved five to zero. Moving on to the policy action items. During the Monday workshop, policy action item number five, Policy CQ Local Technology Resources was pulled off this agenda for a future date. Are there any other policy items you'd like to pull for a separate motion or future date? The order of the policy action items are approved for a single motion. So are there anybody, is anybody wanting to pull one of them? May I have an electronic motion and a second on the remaining policy agenda items listed on this agenda as recommended by TASB Policy Update Number 112 to include any ISleta-specific language by administration?
I move to approve the remaining policy action items listed on this agenda as recommended by TASB Policy Update Number 112 to include any ISleta-specific language by administration.
We have a second by Mr. Cudier and that's approved five to zero. Action item number one, order of cancellation of election for single member District Two and Four. Using your electronic hand, is there any discussion? If no further discussion, may I have a motion?
Madam President, I move to acknowledge the receipt of a certification of unopposed candidates cancel the May 4, 2019 election for District Two and District Four and declare the unopposed candidates elected to office after the canvass of the May 2019 election of ISleta Independent School District.
We have a second by Mr. Ochoa. That's approved five to zero. Action item number two, ratification of award of amendment number ten to YSD Contract Number 20160318 with M&amp;K Architects. Using your electronic hand, is there any discussion? If there's no discussion, may I have a motion?
Madam President, I move to ratify the award of amendment number ten to YSD Contract Number 20160318 with M&amp;K Architects for the design of the baseball field at Eastwood High School in the amount of $228,000 from bond funds.
We have a second by Mr. Rosales. And that's approved five to zero. The Board of Trustees has determined that a closed meeting of the Board of Trustees is required to discuss the items set forth in the posted agenda for this date. Such closed meeting is authorized by the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code Section 551.001, including but not limited to the sections and purposes covered by the following section of the Texas Government Code, 551.071, 72, 73, 74, 76, 82, 821, 83, and 84. Should any final action, decision, or vote be required with regard to any matter considered in closed session, the final action, decision, or vote shall be in open meeting or at a subsequent public meeting with notice. The Board will now move to the Rio Grande Room for closed session at 6:48 PM.